...board member, John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Hengy, Board Member.
Staff introductions, please.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Robert Grant, Co-Officer.
Thomas Cameron, Fire Inspector.
Okay, we'll go to item number two. Revision to an approved major use site plan entitled Old Mill Properties Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC. The proposals amend the water system to accommodate fire hydrants and increase the water system to a six-inch line. Is there someone here representing the applicant? On Zoom?
Yes, sir, Zach Graham online here.
Okay, Zach. Well, the floor is yours. Tell us what we're doing.
All right, I share my screen here. So this is the Arbor House Properties, just off of the Union River up Old Mill Road. And the property, in the original project design, we had an extension of a four-inch water main that went to a booster pump. And from there, we were feeding the rest of the development with a two-inch main and filling cisterns for fire protection. Due to, I guess, getting a contractor involved and the excessive amount of ledge for excavation for those cisterns, it really was becoming infeasible to excavate through that ledge to get those 10,000 gallon cisterns into place. So we went back and talked with Fire Department, planning and everyone to what could we do differently to alternatively go in and install fire hydrants? So the plan before you increases the water line from that four to two inch with the booster pump. We're able to remove the booster pump and run a six-inch main all the way to the end of the road, adding a fire hydrant here at the beginning, another hydrant at this location, at this intersection, a third hydrant at this intersection, and a fourth hydrant at the end. So you have four fire hydrants replacing the three 10,000 gallon cisterns we previously had in the system. And then a full six-inch main going through the development. And then mains and laterals coming off that for each of the lots from there. Otherwise, that really kind of summarizes the change. It's just a water system modification.
Zach, one question I have. I mean, this was going to be done in phases. Now, would the six-inch line go all the way to the end of the road, like immediately? Or does that wait until you start building out Phase Four?
That would, that would wait till Phase Four. And you'll notice that we've got Phase Two in this green phase and Phase Three here. So the main would initially, the plan is to build it all the way out, still this fall, right to this, actually probably terminate, right? There's a, there's a gate valve right here, and then we would terminate it right after that. And then in the future phase, instruct it all the way out for Phase Four.
Okay, so proceeding now, I mean, how many hydrants would you be putting in, like in the near future?
Three.
Oh, there's going to be four altogether?
There would be three hydrants going in now, and then the fourth one would be added in the future with Phase Four.
And it sounds like Fire Department also had that code.
Yep.
Why wasn't...
I'm sorry, what?
No, I was just checking with staff.
Bye, guys. Is there a reason why this isn't purely a code enforcement activity? And why is it coming before the board?
Because it makes a significant change to the fire protection based on the plan that was approved by the board.
Okay, so, all right. Given all the, all the cisterns and so forth that are being eliminated, all the connections and so forth, seems like this is cheaper anyway, or might be cheaper anyway.
I don't know. Zach, do you know if it's...
I mean, it doesn't matter.
With the ledge, it would be.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah. With, with the ledge, the reduction of the ledge, it is less expensive. In my opinion, it's a better option as well because you're not, you know, having to pump out of those cisterns every time. You're going to have pressurized hydrants available, and you're going to have one extra.
Why didn't we start there? I guess.
We didn't, we didn't start there initially. Just, it was an owner decision, frankly, regarding cost. And the cost thought it would be less expensive to go the prior route. And just the reality of that, that ledge and what they've encountered out there, it's not.
Okay.
So does that mean you've eliminated all the cisterns?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Made for a tidier drawing, too.
Say that again?
So, so between hydrant at Snowberry Way and, I can't make out, Phase Four, what's the travel distance between those two?
Uh, ju- just about 700 feet. Well, six, yeah. I'm sorry, not quite, like 680.
So between Snowway and Phase Four is about 680?
Yep.
Correct.
All right.
To the end of Phase Four.
So what we're...
To the end of Phase Four.
What we're doing is we're using the exemption out of NFPA. That cistern says that if deemed by the ASJ, we can reduce the number of hydrants for the initial, initial phase. And in the fire letter, the cistern says that if they proceed to build any more in Phase Four or in Phase Three, they will have to, they will be subjected to, have to install more hydrants to meet those needs.
Okay.
That's in the letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have that letter here?
No, I know I got a letter from you.
I sent you a letter.
For this?
Mm-hmm.
No, I, I just don't remember getting it.
Okay.
I can forward.
I'd like to have a copy of that letter. We should have one for former record.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any comments from staff?
Nope.
I have more improvement than before.
I have a question. You show the lines for the water coming in.
Mm-hmm.
I have one question about the pressure. I assume that's adequate to get all the way down to the Phase Four place.
Yes.
And the, the second question is, what about the drainage, the water going out, so to speak?
What do you mean?
Well, if you have to use a lot of water to suppress a fire, for instance, where does all of that water go?
On the ground, on the buildings, everywhere.
Well, I'm sorry. Like, in the river perhaps is what my concern is, Mark.
Yep. But that's where we would, we would set up our hazmat. If we were using foam and other stuff like that, which is all EPA certified and stuff like that, we would boom it. So that way it doesn't go into the river, and so that we would dam deck and divert. But right now, they still have all their, what's the word I'm thinking here? The stuff to block the water.
Oh, their erosion control?
Erosion control, down.
They have that up now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that will probably remain in place because they did the wood chips kind of mix. So basically, it will deteriorate back into the ground.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm concerned, and it sounds like you're taking, doing your due diligence, but I'm concerned about protecting the river.
Yep. No, that's one of the things that we take into account on every fire call. How close are we to our snow basin? How close are we to the water? What are we affecting? What's the health hazards? What's the wildlife hazards? We take all that into account and try to mitigate it as best we possibly can.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I will open the public hearing. There, anybody on Zoom that we know of, or... Okay. Any ladies in the back? Well, okay. Close the public hearing. Any other comments or issues? If not, I'll make a motion.
Sure. Motion to approve revision to an approved major use site plan entitled Old Mill Property Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner, owner Arbor House Properties LLC. Basically is to modify the plan to show a six-inch water line providing fire protection.
Is there a second?
Are you good with that, Matt?
Did you mention hydrants, too?
No.
Oh, I thought, I thought, okay, I'm sorry. And four hydrants and the six-inch line. Better?
Yes.
Would wording "modify" or "amend" be better?
You're modifying the plan.
I would just say, make a motion to approve the proposed revision to increase the water line from a two-inch line to a six-inch main through the project and replace the three cisterns previously approved by the board to four hydrants.
Like you said.
Just like you said.
Second.
Third. All, all on paper?
I really guess I just put all of it.
No.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Good night.
Presentation from Barry Dunn on Ellsworth's ongoing comprehensive plan update.
You guys ready to go?
Can't find that one.
You may have something to say.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I'll look for it tomorrow. Thanks, Alex.
We see lips moving, but no sound.
Hold up now.
There you go.
Perfect.
Okay, great. So, good evening. I'm Carrie Willett with Barry Dunn. As you know, we're supporting the city in updating the comprehensive plan. So we're here to give you an update on where we are in the project. So we'll go over, just overview of where we are in the timeline, refresher on what's been done with community engagement and developing a vision statement, which you've probably seen. And then we'll have some time to talk about summary of, and highlights from policies and strategies that are still being, being refined with the, with the steering committee and feedback from, from others as well. And we'll talk about next steps and leave some time for questions. So as you know, we started this project over a year ago with inventory analysis, that's collecting data, background information, meeting with city staff to understand current conditions. So that was done, wrapped up towards the end of last year. Concurrently, we were working on a lot of outreach to the community. The bulk of the community engagement was happening in the, in the spring and fall of last year to understand values and priorities of the community that will, that, to then inform the, the policies and strategies of the comp plan. So we're kind of wrapping up Phase Three right now, which is the bulk of the, the actual content of the document of how, how the city will achieve the vision. And then next steps, we'll, we'll talk about developing a structure for how those policies and strategies will be implemented once the plan is adopted. And then we'll be working on pulling all that together to make it, make it look nice and readable for, for you and for the community. So just refresher and update on what we have been doing for outreach to the community. This, really opportunities for involvement and engagement have been ongoing. As I said, the bulk of the outreach was done in the last summer and fall, where we really wanted to understand priorities, values of community members, starting with some public in-person events, the kickoff expo and public forum to discuss key, key issues for the city. Subcommittee meetings for each of the topic areas for the comp plan kicked off in, in the fall, late summer, early fall of last year as well. And then follow-up discussions on policies and strategies this past spring. Through the, through the summer and the fall, Matt and Kristi were involved with community events, so reaching out to different groups and attending tabling and different events to share information about, about the project. The big push was for the survey last fall. Not a good response from that, that was mailed out to, to the community. And then continuous opportunities for people to provide feedback online, whether it was general comments or responding to different questions or, or other, other activities through the, the project website, which is linked below. We have also started working on a housing study in coordination with this effort. So the Housing Forum was part of that, but also informing the, the comprehensive plan that was done in April. And related to that and to inform the future land use, we have, it's currently live now, the Visual Preference Survey, getting feedback on what types of development we want to see in different, in different areas of the city. And then most recently, we facilitated focus group meetings. As I said, we, we haven't gotten a huge turnout for the in-person and these virtual meetings, but this targeted outreach to specific community leaders, organizations, and experts in different areas really gave us good feedback to then go and refine what we have. You know, we, we count on having expertise from the city and from others involved in the community to help guide this in, in the right direction. So those were, went well and provided some great feedback. So just an overview, and I won't, for, for the sake of everyone's time, I won't read through these. And I believe Matt, Matt will share this presentation with you after. But these are the priorities that we pulled together from this engagement, especially from the initial outreach that was done in the, in the summer and fall. As you can see, there was a focus on the environment, open space and recreation, and how that all ties in together, especially related to tourism, as well as economic growth, economy and impact on resident, tax burden impact on residents, as well as the housing and transportation issues associated with economic growth, you know, addressing housing needs and improving transportation options to support economic growth, which was a big concern. And then another big focus was around community. So the, all of the amenities, services, things that impact quality of life, as well as the sense of community, the events and arts and cultural institutions, as well as educational opportunities and those sorts of things. People really wanted to see that sense of community maintained. So this is the, the vision statement that came out of the feedback that we received and was crafted by the steering committee. That Ellsworth is a city rooted in tradition that recognizes and honors the people and places of its past, while also supporting future growth and innovation for a livable community for all. Ellsworth flourishes by finding balance between urban and rural, preservation and growth, and a year-round economy and seasonal tourism. Similarly, the city balances meeting the needs of community members to enhance livability with fiscal responsibility for long-term success. So clearly, that's, it's, it's, it is pretty broad, but it's focused very much on balance and creating opportunities for economic growth while maintaining quality of life for residents, leveraging tourism, but also supporting the needs of people who live, live in the community around employers and people who work in the city as well. So all that is to lead into our discussion of policies and strategies. These are the, the guiding principles to support the vision statement, providing a little more detail and direction. You can see the directly related to the community priorities that came out of the engagement that's been done. So those big focus areas on community, whether that's arts, health and wellness, educational opportunities, and continue, continuous learning, sustainable growth. So looking at how to balance development and have sustainable development without, while protecting open space, natural areas, addressing infrastructure and facilitating, is looking and planning for the long term and having that done in a way that is sustainable and resilient. And then transportation options, thinking about long-term transportation solutions and how land use impacts transportation. And then economic vitality. Again, you see, the, these things related to housing and other amenities that really impact economic vitality and balancing the year-round economy and tourism. So you know, that was a lot of information, but I wanted to give the background to how we got to policies and strategies. So as some of you know, we have a, quite a long list of it broken down by topic area as, as laid out by the state, state's 12 topic areas. So these are just some highlights and summary, summarizing the direction that we're, we're going based on input and feedback from staff and the steering committee and the public. So we can't go through each of, each of the policies and strategies line, line by line, but wanted to give you some highlights for what the direction of the plan will, will look like. So of course, a big focus is on water quality, both for drinking, habitat protection and recreation. A lot of the requirements in the, in what we have now are requirements of the state. So things that the city is required to include in the comp plan or are required to have in their, in your ordinances. But there's also, what's been noted in conversation is that the city is really committed to, to doing more than the, the minimum, thinking about the long-term impacts of development on water quality and, and what can be done that's non-regulatory to, to help improve and protect water resources. Also looking at regional coordination, so knowing that things like watershed, water quality monitoring, watershed planning are really regional issues. And looking to coordinate with other communities on monitoring enforcement as well as planning. Minimizing development impacts on natural and water resources. Again, these are, so the low-impact development standards was, was one recommendation, as well as some others that are non-regulatory, like educational materials, just making people aware of what they can do on their own property to stop the next normal water runoff and, and things like that, that are not necessarily formal regulations, but that can have an impact long-term. So for arts, culture and historic resources, this is really about continuing a lot of the work that the city has already done on preservation and then looking to opportunities where it may make sense to expand. So whether that is a new historic district designation or expansion of existing historic districts, whether that is local or national, and that I know the city has talked about certified local government designation, which would position the city to have additional funding and, and support from this, from the state and federal government on preservation efforts. Another issue that came up was just the lack of awareness that a lot of people have of the, the city's history and culture and opportunities that are available. So how to promote that, one for, to create community and, and continue the passing on the culture and traditions of, of the city and sharing the history of the city with the community, but also as, as an economic driver to, you know, looking at some of the other recommendations around downtown improvements and, and how to improve, increase diversity in downtown, those, those arts and culture events and promoting those amenities that already exist is one way to do that. So leads us straight into economy. Certainly, there was a lot of discussion about downtown and that, while there has been a lot done, improvements made in downtown, there, there's, want to continue on, on that road, including improving and creating more public spaces and other amenities for visitors and residents. Looking to build off existing partnerships to support educational opportunities, whether workforce development. There are a lot of organizations doing different things and how to leverage what's, what's already happening rather than trying to create, create something new. The business attraction plan that was completed last year, kind of building off of that and not, not, and being in alignment with that, which recommended a marketing plan to, to support economic development initiatives and really promote what the city has to offer. Some of that is already, already happening with the additional online resources that are, that have recently been created. And then supporting growth in target industries, so as identified in the business attraction plan, food and beverage industries, recreation, tourism, healthcare and life sciences. In addition to those things, and we'll talk more about this, things like access to childcare, transportation options, housing, those all have a, have a big impact on economic growth and businesses' ability to be successful in Ellsworth. So those, while they're not necessarily in the economy section, they all impact, impact the economy, so. Housing. As you know, we're working on the housing study concurrently with this, this project. So that will have more detailed recommendations, but broadly, in this, in the comprehensive plan, we're looking at a range of approaches to addressing housing. It's, it's a critical issue right now. So in addition to long-term recommendations to increase development, housing development, whether that's incentives or modifications to land use regulations, also looking at other ways of addressing housing. So through managing the short-term rentals, you know, has come up quite a bit and is, is a hot topic, as well as looking at other non-regulatory ways to, to encourage housing that are not resource-intensive. So things like support for small-scale developers, again, coordinating with community organizations that are already providing, providing services, and that's specifically related to low-income, very low-income, the unhoused, which we heard from community service providers that there's a, there's a really critical need to address, address that. And not necessarily for the city to, to create a, a plan or approach to do that, but to help with coordination of existing resources and existing service providers. Some of the land use ordinance regulations that were, are included here, looking at how to increase or allow for different housing types in, in the urban core. So whether that is more opportunities for multifamily development, cluster subdivision regulations, you know, that exists and that could be updated to allow for different types of cluster development or cottage court development, as well as revisiting accessory development unit regulations. Recreation, open space, the big, big one here, of course, was the creation of a parks and recreation department, really that the, this, the size of scale, size of the city and scale of operations, of what facilities the city has and programming, that seems to make sense from, from all, all of the community leaders and, and experts that we have talked to about that. And then thinking about... And then thinking about long-term facility improvements, building that into planning for capital projects for the long term for the city. Again, working with conservation organizations, and that would be both for maintenance and acquisition of additional land. And then what has come up quite a bit is access to water, so the Indian River and lakes, and making sure those current areas for water access are protected, and then also looking at ways to improve either what's, what recreation opportunities are available there, or increasing access points for water recreation. Transportation, so the idea of a bypass came up quite a bit in the feedback that we heard, but that does not seem to be a financially or planning appropriate policy decision passed to move forward on transportation. So, a big part of the transportation focus is on how land use is managed, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, where a lot of the policies around land use are looking at focusing development in the urban core and doing that in a way that allows for connectivity and allowing for additional transportation options to be added or increased. Again, connectivity was a big concern, connectivity and safety, so in and around downtown, when you get a little further from downtown, how to make those areas, like on High Street, more safe and accessible to, for pedestrians and cyclists. And then transportation, for transit, looking at continuing to support what transportation services exist now, focusing on connecting regional centers, looking at options for connecting rural residential areas to downtown and other amenities. That is obviously a big challenge, but there are some good examples. The photo on the top is a small rural regional system in Vermont that has been pretty successful. So, looking at some alternative options to address the needs of people who either don't drive, aren't able to drive, don't have access to a vehicle. Again, we heard that from service providers, that that is a big concern for people being able to get to appointments, or students being able to get to different programs or activities in the city. Public facilities and services, I know that the city's made a lot of improvements around communication, so that was an area where there is intent to have continued focus related to accessibility of information and transparency of operations. Also, improving accessibility of facilities, looking at planning for the necessary infrastructure and facility upgrades and building into that as things are being upgraded, improving access, the accessibility, as well as energy efficiency and resiliency. Coordinating with local and regional service providers in the school district, there's a lot that different organizations are doing, and I think their struggle seems to be with communicating with one another and not having an overlap or overlap of services or challenges with being able to share information. And then finally, improving management of solid waste, which was a common concern for residents that were responded to the survey. Fiscal capacity, generally, the concern of taxes was a comment that we heard from the community, so a lot of that is addressed or trying to be addressed through the land use, the land use component of the plan and how growth is guided, but there are also other opportunities to find additional revenue sources, considerations for shared services where that might be appropriate, especially looking down the road as demographics are changing, where might there be opportunity for shared services that maybe doesn't make sense now, but could make sense in 20 years or so. And then investing in grant writing, I think at least for right now, there's quite a bit of funding from the state and federal government, and an opportunity for the city to take advantage of that funding, but that takes some resources on the city's side. Fostering private community partnerships throughout this project, we have worked with a lot of different representatives from community organizations who have been involved, either formally or informally, with the process and provided great feedback, and I think that's one of the things that Ellsworth really has going for it, is that the involvement of the community, involvement of these different organizations and entities and their commitment to the city, so taking advantage of opportunities to, say, support events or host events and support development where that might be appropriate, and that just requires some coordination and communication, but there are a lot of great things already happening in the city. And then, again, focusing on economic development initiatives and managing land use, so how can, there's a lot of development happening, how can this plan and regulations guide development in a way that is most beneficial for the city? And then finally, what I've been referencing throughout future land use, this, you know, it's a little hard to see, the proposed future land use plan that we have been discussing with this steering committee, large not, not very different from the existing future land use plan and growth area, but with some specific focus on creating transition areas to support mixed use and provide more of a buffer between rural areas and commercial areas, looking at how those land use, certain land use categories within the urban core can allow for more infill development, and then looking at these rural areas, conservation areas, how can growth in those areas be controlled in a way that is appropriate for the city? Right now, there's a lot of undeveloped land and with a lot of potential for more suburban sound development, and how can, how can that rural character be maintained? And then next steps, as I mentioned, the finalizing of policies and strategy recommendations from that will build out an implementation plan. I know that the community members that we have talked to and steering committee have a lot of insight into how this can actually happen and who should be involved and what the timeline is, so all those things will be incorporated into providing more specific guidance on policy and strategy implementation. And then the final plan development, looking to wrap that up for the council, for you, for planning board, and for the council to review and approve by the end of the year. That was all I had, but happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a few questions. My first one is about, and this is my greatest concern here in this plan, is about aesthetics and the quality of life, which ties in my mind to sustainability and economic vitality. I'm maybe going to get myself in trouble for this, but I'm going to say it anyway. There are no aesthetics involved in High Street. In fact, they're anti-aesthetic. Is there anything in your plan that you can see that would begin to attract people to the city, to attract businesses to the city, not just because they can develop a piece of land, but because it's an attractive place to live? Many places in Ellsworth are very attractive, and we're working on Main Street, I know, but there are a lot of things that are happening here where, in my opinion, where we're not looking at the aesthetics of, the aesthetics as we should be.
Go ahead.
I was like, do you want to answer that, or? Yeah, I'll answer. Yes, I mean, staff is currently working on like a long-term planning project for High Street in particular. The beautification is something in the short term that the city has gone through a little bit of transition with it, but now it's in-house with the city again. High Street is a focus area for it, and it's not going to happen overnight, but it is something that current staff has a focus on and thinks is a high priority. There's also some challenges of existing businesses, you know, when the malls went in in the seventies, there weren't buffering or landscaping requirements, and you can't retroactively apply them necessarily, but there are other things we could do as the city with the land that we do have, and newer businesses going in, like Bar Harbor Bank and Trust has done a really good job landscaping their property that they just renovated, just to have more communication and ask things of developers as they come into that area.
Great, because I think when we're talking about attracting business and new residents, I think those kinds of measures will go a long way to achieving those goals. Thanks, Matt.
Building off of what Matt said is underway, there is a recommendation about corridor planning for that stretch of High Street.
Great, that's wonderful, because I'd really like to see our city become, you know, not something to be driven through, but someplace to really visit, and I think, Matt, from what I heard you say, that's what we're trying to achieve.
On the same page.
So, a question, a statement, transitioning areas to implement mixed use, is that actually meaning that you're going to rezone places to accommodate mixed use, and how far are we going to go with that?
Yeah, I mean, potentially, like, the plan itself reflects community input and staff input, but does it actually rezone, council to kind of have to give that directive once the plan's been adopted? Yeah, so the idea is like, right now, you'll have neighborhood zone, you're familiar with the zoning, because we're, the neighborhood zone abuts right up to the urban zone, the urban zone allows a lot of high-impact uses, neighborhood zone hardly allows any commercial uses, but there are lots in areas that are right next to each other with these competing goals and uses, so there's no zone that kind of softens that, like no buffer zone. So, that mixed-use zone would have a more of a balance between, you know, less of the high impact that's allowed in the urban zone, but more of like commercial or like restaurant uses that aren't allowed in the neighborhood zone, to create a transition area between those two parts of the city.
So, you're actually saying that in a residential zone, you're going to allow property, you can rezone it so that you can have commercial use in the residential zone? Is that the intent?
Not like all commercial uses, but again, like low-impact, like a restaurant or like a retail shop. It may not be rezoning the neighborhood zone, it may be rezoning the urban zone to allow fewer uses.
Let me ask, while we're talking about High Street, I mean, Ellsworth is an urban compact, and the recent discussions we've had, you know, concerning stormwater, that the state is kind of, you do what you want, and I guess, how far, how much power do we have in the urban compact as far as roads go? Because, I mean, one of my pet peeves is, it seems like DOT never wants to close a curb cut. I think, I mean, that whole length of High Street could be, the areas that create problems for traffic, for crashes, could be reduced by reducing curb cuts, but, I mean, recent, I mean, out of the triangle with the Rite Aid, you know, Rite Aid building, I had a discussion with you whether they were going to close that one curb cut just as you turn on Route 1, and you said DOT didn't care about it.
I don't, for that project, I don't remember if that is true, I don't remember, Robert, if you remember, if they, thought they had to close the curb cut in that one.
There was a discussion, but I don't recall either exactly what it was, but there has been discussion about it.
But I think, I would say, staff at DOT now is far more open to closing curb cuts. Part of our corridor study of High Street involves looking at potential closure of curb cuts, so I wouldn't say it's something, we do have a fair amount of influence over what happens in an urban compact, we may have to go get approval from DOT, but if we think it's the right thing to do, they're likely to go along with it if it's within the urban compact. There's never really been a plan or an actual proposal of how to go about doing that, it's probably more of a project to project as opposed to a whole corridor plan, which I think they'd prefer to see.
I mean, you could control the, if you got rid of access points along High Street, can control, go the flow a little better, I mean, there's, like I said, there's just too many.
I agree, yeah.
Access and turns, make them go away?
Yeah.
Not hard to say.
Any other questions for Carrie? You said you had a couple?
I think I covered them, thank you.
Okay. Anything more?
No, zero.
All right.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
See ya.
Okay, on to staff comments, anything?
Yeah, there's a couple updates, so the housing study that was referenced by Carrie, we have received the first, well, actually, today I got the second draft of the housing needs assessment as part of that study. Jen and I are going to look at our calendars, and we will be holding the first meeting of a housing task force sometime soon, before the end of the month, to review that study and go through, you know, the data and get feedback from the task force on that data. And that task force is made up of a number of professionals from the area that are involved in housing, as well as some business owners and residents, John's on that, represents the planning board, and then we also are doing a village partnership initiative, which I mentioned before, but like Vince, I said probably before you were on the board, which looks at Main Street and this downtown area in terms of bike pad accessibility and streetscaping and traffic calming. We've recently released the RFP for that, for a consultant to come and help, and we are forming a separate working committee to work on that group. Rick has offered to help with that portion, with that study, and that'll be like a year-long study, looking at specifically the downtown area and connectivity between the harbor downtown, as well as sidewalks that don't exist currently on more of the residential streets as you go down Franklin and Hancock, and then, yeah, the streetscaping really for that whole area as well, beautification, things like that, and then, I just got the comp plan updates, I'm not going to give more of a comp plan update, and then, surprise guest tonight, this is Brittany Merrill.
Hi.
She will start Monday in the planning office, is the new, we changed the physician's title, she's formerly the assistant planner, now the planning and community development assistant, she'll be working with Jenna and I, both in the economic development and planning departments, but she has a lot of catching up to help me with for minutes when she starts on Monday.
Just in case you were wondering. Just in case you were wondering.
So it's good she was here, so she can see what the meetings are like, but that'll be a good way, it's how I learned too, first assignment I had was doing minutes for a meeting I didn't attend, so.
So what are you going to stick with, six months' worth of planning? Board meetings for a minute?
It's not six months, it's like three or four months of planning and like three months of steering committee, so. She'll learn, catch up on them.
But you're still here.
And then, yeah, we'll spread it out, yeah.
Okay, fast.
And, yeah, so we're excited for her to start, I don't know if you want to say hello something, or?
I'm excited to get to know you all better and all support the city.
Sounds good.
And that's all I've got.
I do have one more question.
Yeah, the pylors for you guys assigned to for previous projects.
So I do have one more question. I don't know if I address it to you or to you. I know, because one of the things that they identified was basically that of traffic.
Yep.
What is the mechanism, or is there a mechanism to eliminate, or not eliminate, to alleviate the traffic on High Street that we have, like at 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon? And on Bridge Hill at 8:00, 7:00 in the morning and in the afternoon, like right now? What is the, is there mechanisms in place to take care of that?
Well, part of it is the study that's coming up in terms of, you know, looking at the corridor itself, but it's really a management kind of thing as opposed to building, I mean, as far as I know, management rather than new stuff.
Yep.
And when I say new stuff, I don't mean, I mean, not new roads.
Yep.
But management of the ones we have.
And I'll just add, like, talking to Jason, there actually has been better traffic flow on High Street this year, just based on adjusted camera timing, but people don't really notice something like that necessarily. But DOT is coming through with new, upgrading all the cameras on High Street soon, and that should also help improve timing of flow.
And I know part of it is probably the workforce between Bar Harbor and here as well, because, like, I was pulling out three, around 3:30, quarter to four, and from this upper way, the traffic was backed up all the way to McDonald's.
Yeah.
I mean, it's got to be a mechanism to take care of that somewhere or somehow.
We're in 20 years too late.
I think we're going to put a big dam at the end of the island, and instead of keeping water, it's going to keep people back.
Yeah.
Just saying.
But I mean, the issue is, you know, the issue is, we're, I've seen, as many years I've been here, and you, I'm sure, we've seen the traffic increase and increase and increase and increase. We're, not to say that it's, I'm trying not to put there, but we're turning into a Gorham. You've been in the town of Gorham, how the traffic is in Gorham, I mean, it's terrible. So, I mean, there's got to be a mechanism to deal with that.
Well, thank God you're not in Bellevue, Washington.
Well, I've been through Bellevue, Washington, my folks live in Bellingham, Washington, so, you know.
Yeah. No, I mean, you know, it's a pretty, traffic is really a symptom of another set of holistic issues. I mean, the housing study that we're doing reflects that about 4,500 people, you know, come to the city to work, but they don't live here, so that's traffic coming in and out every day, 4,500 people, 2,000 people leave to go work elsewhere, I do live in Ellsworth, and only 1,200 circulate within the city for both living and working. So housing, you know, walkability, bike path access, you know, encouraging more, you know, encourage those things and fix those things, and employers should also come to the city, which reduces internal traffic and local traffic. What about the seasonal traffic, it's a bit harder, you know, we want people to come here seasonally for tourist reasons, so really kind of attacking the more localized daily traffic is a good way to kind of look at that, but.
But part of it is, it, part of it is, the, part of the congestion has to do with, you know, there are some successes in Ellsworth, right? And the more success you have, the more congestion you have. If you want to get rid of all congestion, then you just do away with all economic activity and obviously, anyway. But the point is that part of it is just having to learn, you know, to recognize the fact that you're just simply not going to eliminate all the congestion. How do you manage it, manage it the best you can, and it's probably going to be a lot of small steps, you know, doing something with traffic signals is one, closing curb cuts is another, and so forth and so on. And, you know, getting the state to recognize that there is a statewide responsibility for what goes on in Ellsworth, which is different than some other cities, because, you know, we, you know, the state is saying, oh, come here, and in essence, pass through, okay, but we're not going to help you deal with that too much, or as much as you should, so. I know that that's not an adequate answer for you, but.
It's perfectly adequate answer, as far as I'm concerned, I just know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But Rick, I would quarrel just with your language, not your ideas, and that is, it's, you said it earlier, we shouldn't try as in air planning to view Ellsworth as something to pass through.
Sure, we don't want to view it as that, but you have to recognize that a whole bunch of it is passed through.
Absolutely, but we also ought to try to get some people to pull on the brakes, the turn indicators, find the parking lots, and enjoy this town.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's true, I don't know if that'd solve your traffic problem, but.
No, well, maybe it will, because it won't, you know, everybody will be going into parking lots and so on.
And then, are they going to stay there, or are they going to come out sometime?
Yeah, they'll come back out again, but we may have a pedestrian problem after that.
I mean, two, you know, two major employers in the county have to come through Ellsworth.
Yep.
Or Harbor-Jackson Lab, then Ellsworth-Jackson Lab, and when they let out or get, they're driving through.
Yep, and more forced housing, again, spread out on the island too, and in Ellsworth would help alleviate how far they have to travel, many people that work for those employers have to drive through Ellsworth because they can only find housing beyond, you know.
And therein lies part of the problem too, is that, you know, some of the, some of these things are well beyond our control.
Absolutely.
Really, I mean, because it's kind of like, you know, if, if the island had better housing opportunities, for whatever reason, you know, then we would have less congestion problems, and it would be more of a destination and all those good things, but, you know, but that we can't, you know, we, we have to just cooperate with people.
Yeah, and I agree, I mean, when, when Jackson Lab decided to come to Ellsworth, that was one of the biggest discussions that we had, was the traffic, especially as they were building up between Phase One, Two, Three, and Four, we knew that eventually they were going to have 300 employees here in Ellsworth or more, and so that was, you know, something that was discussed, I remember that.
But, but think about, you know, how long the city's been screwing around with the Myrick Street area, how much vacant land is there? If that land was actually developed, you know, you think that that's going to not increase congestion even more?
It's going to increase even more.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, flip side to being a pass-through location, and businesses want people passing through to stop, but I think one of the biggest restrictions is that traffic is so bad that people passing through say, I'm going, I'm not stopping.
I absolutely agree.
And, you know, I mean, Rick said, well, you know, it doesn't look like some of the discussion, you know, was going to, they'd be talking about new roads, I'm not so sure that that's something that shouldn't be discussed. I mean, I know, you know, the bypass idea was 30 years ago and fell flat on my face, but, you know, you look at some of the bypasses that the state is financing now, and they're spending on golly amounts, I mean, how much do they spend up in Prescott? You know, I'm not up in Prescott very often, I don't know what the total problem was and how, how well they, they worked through that, and it was a successive amount, or it's even done.
Or even needed.
Yeah, but it's like.
That would be the.
And, you know, the people, I agree, they're not stopping. And people are looking for shortcuts around instead of coming and finding, you look, Water Street's the same problem as High Street at a certain time of day, I mean, why? Because people think that's a shortcut to get through, they don't have to deal with High Street, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and people are always looking for a shortcut around.
I mean, I think when they first proposed 395, I mean, oh, that's going to be the death of Brewer, and it's probably been the best thing that's happened to Brewer. So that was the fear back when that got built and proposed, that Brewer's just going to be a ghost town, you know, there's not going to be anybody going to the business of Brewer.
It's going to be a big challenge, I mean, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, that's obvious, but it's.
Because it's not getting better.
Yeah, but at some point, it may reach an equilibrium and not get worse. No, I'm serious.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you look, well, okay, we're getting into, into supply and demand and so forth, and, you know, there are points where, you know, congestion does control at some point, it gets too congested, travel costs are too high, and development stops or main, or stabilized.
Yeah, the question is, does Ellsworth want to get to that point that, you know, somebody who Ellsworth's trying to attract is going to say, no thanks?
Well, I would only question, in the abstract, how close to that place are we, that point that you just talked about?
I will say, when people, businesses are looking to come into Ellsworth, traffic is hardly their concern, because for a business, traffic is good.
A business what?
Traffic is generally good, because there's more people passing.
And, and if we, and if we're realistic and control, compare the traffic here with the traffic in big cities, it's still not all that bad.
True that.
I've almost been mobbed for saying things like that.
Were you?
I've been mobbed for saying things like that.
I'm sure you have.
So be careful.
I answered to a higher bar.
But then you kick in, okay, the more somebody wants to come to Ellsworth for business or develop something, okay, and that's going to affect housing.
You know, that's the bigger problem.
Well, I mean, you look at, you know, look at the, the number of housing units that we have approved, okay, most of those people that are living in those housing units are, will leave in those housing units, don't necessarily live here now, you know? And, and, you know, that just makes more congestion, more traffic.
It's like you said, what, 4,500?
Yes, come to Ellsworth to work.
Coming to Ellsworth, don't live in Ellsworth. I bet you it's probably more than that.
Probably, could be.
But, again, that's, it doesn't help, but it's, that's not, that's a universal problem.
Yeah, oh, no question.
Yeah, there's, there are, there are tables and charts out there that look at every major city in the country and start to say, well, you know, what's the daytime population versus the nighttime population of a, of a major city? And, you know, ones where you have a lot of people coming in during the day, you know, which kind of share some of that problem that we're having right now, that 4,500.
Well, now that you have an assistant, have something on next month's agenda, so we can solve it.
That's right.
That's right, perhaps the assistant could come up with the solutions.
Give me two months.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, she's got to do the minutes.
First things first.
I think we're done, anything else?
No, that's it.
Stick around, we got to sign pylors, potion for German.
So.
Second.